Good evening, everybody. This is the work session of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held August thirteenth, 2019 at 6:00 PM. And we are at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. First is we're going to have the city clerk please read or take role, make sure we're all here.
Councilmember Althaus.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Halls.
Here.
Councilmember Narin.
Here.
Councilmember Howarkey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry.
Here.
And Mayor Linsky.
Here, thank you. Okay, so there's just one item on the agenda tonight, and I'm sure you all know what it is. It is the Proposed Cottonwood Municipal Airport Noise Action Plan. And I'll just kick things off here just quickly. Normally, we meet at the council chambers. Appreciate everyone working with us to meet here tonight. It's a little different. We expected a larger crowd than what we have here tonight, so we wanted to make sure we had...
There was a lot of confusion after the words "do the job."
It's here tonight?
It's here tonight.
Yep, okay.
Didn't post it?
Yeah, we did post it. Yeah.
Facebook.
Okay.
Email with it.
Okay. So as we kick things off tonight, I just want to let everyone know that right outside the hall are restrooms. And everybody here tonight is going to have an opportunity to address counsel. We would ask that we're going to limit your time with counsel to five minutes each. Everybody will have an opportunity to speak. And further, I just want to say, I really do appreciate... This has been a year-long process as we work through the issues concerning airport noise in our community. So I do appreciate everyone being here tonight. We do want to hear from everyone. We are not a community that agrees on everything every single day of the week. We have a lot of divergent opinions in the... Thank you. In the community, and our job up here as counsel is to be responsive to your concerns and to try to do the best we can to represent our constituents. So again, we're here tonight to hear from everybody and appreciate your attendance. So without further ado, we're going to bring up Mr. Morgan Scott to give us a brief background on this. And then the way this is going to roll out is we'll hear from Morgan Scott and staff, and then we're going to also hear from the members of the public tonight. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. That's really loud. Let's go back. So we are here today to talk about the Proposed Airport Noise Action Plan. It has gone through the Airport Commission. They have recommended it. So what's tonight going to look like? We'll go through a little bit of a background. We'll explain how we got to where we're at today. I'll try to go through a few frequently asked questions that a lot of the community has asked, just to address those ahead of time. We'll also go through, what are our federal requirements? Is this too loud? Is that... We're good?
That's good.
Okay. I feel like I'm yelling at you. I apologize. We'll go through some of the federal requirements that tell us what we can and cannot do. We'll also review the Proposed Noise Action Plan, and then, of course, we'd like your feedback as far as where do we go from here. So, background. How do we get here today? Starting in March of 2018, the city began receiving an above-normal amount of calls concerning noise from aircraft. Now, I'm going to refer to this map several times tonight, so I'm going to take a minute to orient all of ourselves. I'm going to point at both maps so the audience is looking at the same. But you'll see right here, the runway is outlined in white. For the people in the audience, it's right here. This is 89A going through town. You have Verdi Village Unit Eight located south of the runway. That's 1,400 feet from the end of the runway to the nearest home. And again, for the people in the audience, you have Verdi Village Unit Eight located south of the runway. You have Pine Shadows located to the north, 6,600 feet from the end of the runway. This is Pine Shadows in this area here. Then you have Cottonwood Ranch, Old Town. That way, we're all looking at the same map and we're all oriented ourselves correctly. Each one of those yellow dots represents a person who's called in to register a concern about aircraft. So we'll refer to this map several times tonight. It's interesting to note that prior to 2018, all documented airport noise complaints came from south of the airport, mostly from the Verdi Village Unit Eight area. And you can see why. Basically, you have a neighborhood less than 1,400 feet from the end of the runway. Since March of 2018, there's been 54 different people who've called in to registered concerns. Twenty-eight percent of them from the north, 10% from the west, 23% from the east. The largest area impacted is still the south. Thirty-nine percent of those concerns have come from the south. Now, a lot of people ask, why? Why does there appear to be more aviation activity going on? One reason may just be a better economy. I think in a better economy, most of us take on more leisurely activities. One of those activities might be flying and/or learning to fly or training to fly. Another thing that may have contributed to why people are being impacted by aircraft noise more is we did have a flight school expand to the Prescott area out of the Oregon area. That flight school is known for training bush pilots, and those bush planes are... they're very powerful, loud aircraft. They're made to take off from dirt and grass runways, from very short field runways. They moved here to the... I'm sorry, they moved to the Prescott area in the summer of 2018. Many people refer to it as the Yellow Airplane. It's actually two or three different airplanes. The airplanes, they all look very similar. They're all painted yellow. But that's a newer flight school out of the Prescott area. It's interesting to note, that school would actually rather land on dirt and grass strips. When they first came here, they asked us, could they land on the area between the taxiway and the runway? We said no, from a liability and a safety point of view. We said, no, you can't do that. But they have actively been looking for a dirt or a grass strip to land on. There's five dirt airstrips in the Verdi Valley. There's over 19 dirt airstrips in the Prescott area. Unfortunately, all of them are privately owned, so all of them have said, no, you can't land on private property. But that'll come into play when we talk more about the action plan later on. Another thing that may have raised awareness, during August of 2018, the City of Prescott closed one of their three runways for reconstruction. I think that did add to a lot of our activity, especially during that 30-day period. Probably raised a lot of awareness. Now, a lot of people ask, why are the planes circling? Now, the circling is a training activity known as a touch-and-go. That touch-and-go is required for both a pilot to get their license as well as to maintain their license. And you might... You could possibly imagine, one of the most stressful parts of flight is the takeoff and the landing. So that's what they're practicing. Because a lot of people ask, why don't they fly out in the middle of nowhere where they're not bothering anybody? Well, of course, they need to practice those takeoff and landings near a runway. And unfortunately, just the way towns throughout northern Arizona and really throughout the country have grown in around their airports. So that's why they need to come in and do those touch-and-go operations. A lot of people have also asked, why are they coming to Cottonwood? And that's a fair question. So we did go ahead and meet with the flight schools, and we asked them that question. One of the largest flight schools is Embry-Riddle. Embry-Riddle sends less than 2% of their flights to Cottonwood. So I know, it seems like we have a lot of activity compared to a lot of the other airports. We actually do not have a lot of activity compared to a lot of other airports. Prescott is the 35th busiest airport in the United States. It has over 270,000 operations a year. That compares to Cottonwood's 19,000 operations. So I'm not trying to say we don't have some issues here we want to work through, but believe me, it could be a lot worse. We could be on the other side of the hill. Also, a lot of those flight schools, they use a lot of other airports. They use Seligman, Baghdad, Wickenburg, Williams, Payson. They will occasionally use Sedona. Now, for reasons we'll talk about here in a minute, Sedona has restricted touch-and-go activities. The FAA actually specifically states, we have to allow touch-and-go training activities unless it's a safety or congestion reason, unless we can justify with one of those. Now, Sedona, depending on which stat you look at, is the fourth or fifth most dangerous airport in the world to fly into. That's why they have said, please don't do that type of training activity here. Cottonwood is actually, fortunately, a fairly safe airport to fly into. And also, we don't have congestion issues. We actually have a lot of room. But that's why a lot of people are coming to Cottonwood. And the FAA, when they give us... We'll talk more about this in a minute. When they give us that money for capital improvements, they say we will allow all aviation activity, which unfortunately includes training. Oh, there was a statement, a newspaper article last week. I just want to clarify that. There was a statement made that staff said that Cottonwood should serve as a training hub. That was not the statement. I apologize. What we said was, the FAA requires that Cottonwood allowed training activity. We did not say we are promoting training activity. So there was a quite... a slight misquote there that I just wanted to clarify. Now, what are actions that Cottonwood has already taken to remedy prior to this coming up? In 2006, Cottonwood published this airport vicinity map in accordance with state law. Now, state law requires all public airports to publish a map like this with the county recorder's office. If you purchase property within the Cottonwood area, this map will be in your title report. What this map says is, hey, your property may be impacted by airport noise. And it was... The state law was created to make people aware while they were purchasing property. So Cottonwood did that back in 2006. Also, many developments in and around the area since 2017 have dedicated what's called an Navigation Easement. An Navigation Easement is a document, in addition to this document, that would show up in your title report, saying, you're not only near the airport, you can expect to be impacted by aircraft noise, you're also limited to certain heights on your buildings and heights on your trees and those kind of things. So a lot of airports in and around the... Sorry, a lot of developments in and around the airport since 2017 have given us those Navigation Easements. We also have what's called a Calm Wind Runway. Many of you will remember from that map we looked at earlier, when you look north of the airport, the nearest residence north of the airport is 6,600 feet from the end of the runway. The nearest resident south of the airport is 1,400 feet from the end of the runway. So we ask pilots that, if possible, if it's a calm wind runway... And by the way, there's a lot of variables to if that's possible. It might depend on the weather, the temperature, the wind direction, the pilot, the type of aircraft. But if possible, can you please take off to the north? Basically, can we have the minimum impact on our residences as possible? We already have that Calm Wind Runway. It's referred to as Runway 3-2. And by the way, although we only have one strip of asphalt, it's actually referred to in the pilot world as two runways. You have the runway to the north, 3-2, and the runway to the south, 1-4. So we already have that Calm Wind Runway. We've also documented all concerns that have come into us since March of 2018, and that's going to help us, as you've noticed from that map. And we went ahead and we met with four of the largest flight schools in the Prescott area. Many of people talk about just Embry-Riddle. Yes, Embry-Riddle's the largest school. There's actually several flight schools in the Prescott area. There's several flight schools in the Deer Valley area that also utilize Cottonwood. So I'm going to go ahead and go through the Noise Action Plan. We do recommend that the Calm Wind Runway remain to the north. Basically, if safely possible, would pilots please take off to the north? Also, we have a new FBO on the field. That FBO can help assist and carry out this plan. It's been years since Cottonwood has had people on the field who can actually talk to pilots or communicate with pilots. That FBO is going to be a huge help in assisting with this. We are requesting pilots take... do not have any midfield takeoffs. Now, what does that mean? Now, if you look at the map here, you have the runway outlined in white. For those in the audience, you have it right here. And you have the red arrow and the green arrow. Many aircraft, especially many of our based aircraft, do not need the entire runway to take off. They can take off, say, midfield. They can start here on the red arrow, and they can take off from there. We are requesting, as part of the Noise Action Plan, that all pilots go down to the end of the runway and take off near the green arrow. Now, what does that do? It pushes them an additional 2,000 feet away from the nearest resident. Now, that 2,000 feet might buy them close to 100 feet further above the residences by the time they get there. When we ran this by the pilots, they said, this is a minor inconvenience. They would be willing to do this in order to be as friendly as possible. So we are requesting, as part of this Noise Action Plan, that pilots do not have any midfield takeoffs. Something else we would like to explore during the upcoming master plan process is what's called a displaced threshold. Now, I want to emphasize, a displaced threshold is not a runway extension. Yes, it's an extension of the asphalt, but there's a big difference between a runway extension and a displaced threshold. You'll notice this yellow area right here. For those in the audience, it's located right here. That's about an additional 1,000 feet that could be added to the south end of the runway. Now, the difference between a runway extension and a displaced threshold is this. When you are taking off to the north, an aircraft could taxi another 1,000 feet to the south, pushing them another 1,000 feet from the residences to the north in order to take off. However, planes, when they are landing, when they're flying in from the south, they do not land here. They would have to land at the same location they land today. Also, planes taking off to the south, if you were starting here, taking off to the south, you'd have to take off prior to this point. So that's the biggest difference between a displaced threshold and a runway extension. I know that may be a little confusing, because it is. But that's also... That's why we're going to have to explore it a lot more during the master plan process. So that's no guarantee, but it's something we'd like to explore more. We have installed signage on the field. Just a couple months ago, we installed signage, reminding pilots of the Calm Wind Runway. As part of the Noise Action Plan, we'd like to meet annually with the P&amp;Z Department to remind them of the FAA grant assurances, to remind them of what is compatible use in and around the airport. Yes, I think they know, but I think these things tend to get forgotten. There's probably been times where we get reminded every couple of years, and I think these things just tend to slip off. So we'd just like to set up an annual meeting with the P&amp;Z Department to look at what is compatible use in and around the airport. We'd also like to develop an education campaign that we could perhaps work with local realtors and property managers to let them know what areas are impacted by aircraft noise. That way, they can make sure to pass that on to their tenants or prospective buyers. Several airports, we've noticed, especially in the state of Arizona, what they've gone ahead and done is they've developed a video that goes on the airport website. So if you're a pilot flying in, you can click on that video. You can see, okay, what areas are, you know, prone to noise activity that you can try to be very sensitive to. So we'd like to develop a video like that that can go on the city's website. We can also... There are two more vacant properties located just north of the airport which are residentially zoned. We'd like to meet with those property owners to see if there's something we can do to either rezone or navigation easement, basically something that's going to make sure when they do develop, they develop as a compatible use near the airport. We'd like to support the flight schools. They mentioned that they are exploring the idea of developing auxiliary training fields somewhere throughout northern Arizona, further away from existing communities. We don't know what that support will look like, but we'll support them in their exploration of those auxiliary fields. Another thing we'd like to do, and I say explore, because I'm not even sure the... how we would do this. I know Steve and I will have to look into it. But we'd like to explore the possibility of a city ordinance that requires a landlord to notify a tenant in the same way that the state law requires a seller to notify a buyer. One of the issues we found is that many of the property owners located north of the airport, although they own the home, they don't actually own the land, meaning they may have not gotten a title report, they may have not been notified. So we'd like to explore a city ordinance that would require that notification. We can place the airport vicinity map on the city's website. In fact, we've gone ahead and we've done that. And that way, if you're just looking in the area, you don't have to necessarily wait until you pull a title report. If you want to do your due diligence, you can go ahead and look at the airport website, find that airport vicinity map, and we'll just make it more easily found. We will place this Airport Noise Action Plan on the Airport Commission's agenda every month until all these action items are completed, and then we can send you written updates as needed as the plan progresses. I do want to take a minute to talk about a few alternatives that the Airport Commission discussed at length, but ultimately did not recommend and why they didn't recommend them. So this map that you're seeing right here in front of you, the black arrows represent where most aircraft fly. Now, they might be outside of that slightly, but you can kind of get an idea where most aircraft are going to be flying. When we met with the flight schools, particularly the bush pilot flight schools, they said, you know, we have the capability of flying out and flying a much, much tighter pattern. That's that pattern you see there in the yellow arrows. Now, interesting enough, that pattern is mostly over commercial and industrial areas. So when they first brought up that idea, we said, let's try it. Let's give it an experiment. Let's see what happens. Well, this is what happened. Yes, during that couple-week period, we did decrease complaints to the north. However, we increased complaints in the Candy Lane and Mingus Avenue area. We also increased complaints in the Date and Elm area. Basically, we increased complaints right around this area you see here. Ultimately, the Airport Commission does not recommend this, because it does create a collision point. If you had two planes in the pattern, when they enter back together right here, it's a potential collision point and a major safety issue. So we're not recommending that. Several citizens have asked, why don't they fly over State Route 89A? For those of you who don't know, there's a 700-foot-wide commercial corridor centered on 89A, both in Cottonwood and in Clarktown. At first, it sounded like it had some merit. Basically, when pilots are flying out, they follow those black arrows until they get to the red arrows. They turn a slight left, and they follow the state highway until they're high enough to turn out over residences where there'll be less of an impact. This was discussed at length with the Airport Commission. Unfortunately, this would create another collision point. You can see where the red arrow would come back to the black arrow pattern and another collision point. So the Airport Commission does not recommend this due to those safety concerns. Another thing that we discussed at length was a verbal agreement with the flight schools. And by the way, the flight schools were open to this, but the agreement would say something like, would you please limit touch-and-go training activity to, say, business hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5? And they were open to that idea, but the Airport Commission's concern is that actually we might create more complaints, because we're now congesting that time, and we might have a lot more congestion of noise during that time. So ultimately, we're not recommending that. The final item that was discussed at length but not being recommended is what's called the Traffic Pattern Altitude. Now, this will not impact aircraft when they're either taking off or landing, but more when they're on the opposite side of the pattern. So a traffic pattern altitude, when you're at traffic pattern altitude, it's how far you are above the ground. Many airports across the country, for a single-engine aircraft, you would be 1,000 feet above the ground. In Cottonwood, for whatever reason, it's 800 feet above the ground. Ultimately, the Airport Commission is recommending we leave that at 800 feet above the ground. So a quick summary, what does this airport... What does this action plan do? We're going to notify pilots as the best methods that they can fly friendly in the Cottonwood area. As much as possible, it's going to increase the height of aircraft over residences. We're going to promote future compatible growth near and around the airport, and we're going to make sure that potential residents and people moving to the area, they're aware of the proximity to the airport. So that is what we believe we can do within the requirements of the federal government. Questions on the plan?
Before we go on, if I could, can we skip the slide that I think's important to discuss? If we can go back to federal requirements, it talks about the amount of money that we have received from the federal government. We kind of skipped over that. If we could just hit that one slide before you open up to questions.
Thank you. I apologize that I missed that slide. So what are the federal requirements? For those of you who don't know, the airport was established prior to 1942. In fact, this is one of my favorite pictures we've dug up. This is the Cottonwood area in 1942. You can see we had three runways at that time and not a lot of development around the runways. And as has happened in many other communities, you've had development move in around the area. Since 1968, the city... In fact, it wasn't the city at that time, but the airport began receiving federal funds. 90% of all capital costs for federal... for capital projects at the airport have come from the federal government. With that money comes what they call grant assurances. Now, for example, just since 2014, that amount has been over 5.4 million that the FAA has put into not only the local economy, but into the Cottonwood airport specifically, and that's just since 2014. Now, those grant assurances, those are the strings that come attached with that money. Those will say things like, you... The airports, all public airports that receive federal money will allow all aviation activity, which includes training. This is why the federal government has the ability to tell us what we can and cannot allow at the Cottonwood Airport. Also, federal law does not allow us to regulate anything what's in the air. A lot of people have asked, why don't we just put a noise ordinance on it, similar to what we do with motorcycles and, say, trucks? Federal... That's federal law, and we have no jurisdiction in that area. Now, the city can provide guidance on how to fly friendly in that area. And I apologize, that was supposed to be my lead-in, but I missed this slide somehow.
Do we have any questions for Steph?
If you could clarify. So there's been 54 complaints in that area. If you drew a circle around where all those complaints are, what would the population We're just kind of looking at what is the percentage.
That's approximately Cottonwood proper. So I would guesstimate, this is a guess, approximately 10,000?
So 54 out of 10,000.
Is that... Is there a better...
I would think so, because a lot of the complaints are out of Verdi Village Eight, and so you add that population, so it's probably 54 out of closer to 20,000? 18,000?
So Verdi Village Eight is actually in the city. But you're right, I think it could be a little bit more than our population.
I have a question about the hours that the FBO is onsite at the airport.
So it is seven days a week, and I believe it's eight to six.
Okay. But there's presence seven days a week at the airport?
That's great.
Okay. I've certainly learned more about our Cottonwood Airport in the last year than I thought I'd ever know. It's been a very educational experience from both sides, also from hearing from the public on the complaints that we've received. So appreciate your work on this. I know it's been a process. Appreciate the work to the Airport Commission as we've worked through this noise mitigation plan, so.
Mr. Mayor, the chair is also here, if you had any questions for the Chair of the Airport Commission also.
Are we done with Morgan?
The 1,000-foot on the south end, I know it's going to be a place to start that you're proposing to add.
This area highlighted in yellow, sir.
A potential displacement threshold, yes. What kind of a noise problem is that going to create for that Verdi Village Eight area when planes are taxiing down there? They're going to be quiet, but when they're getting ready to take off, they're going to be revving their engines for acceleration. How much extra noise is that going to create to the south?
I think that is a big part of what we're going to have to explore during the airport master plan. And as part of the master plan, we're doing a noise study. What I would like to do is, a part of the consideration for the displaced threshold is ask them to assess that. They'll know what type of aircraft we have using the airport. They'll know approximately what their decibels are, and they'll be able to say, this is what we can or should not do. But I think that's something we're going to have to ask as we're exploring this process.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Scott? Mr. Moni, would you like to come to the podium and address the council?
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot, but I know this has been on your plate for well over a year now, so we sure appreciate hearing from you on this.
I think Morgan pretty well covered what we have been doing. One of the primary... Our primary objective was safety. And then we had to weave this into the federal air regulations, which are about that thick, and then to make the airport as neighbor-friendly as we possibly can. And I think this plan goes a long way to helping or alleviate the problem. Any other specific questions?
Specific questions for Chairman Moni?
I just had a question about a term, and I apologize, Chairman, I forgot to ask you earlier when we were speaking. In the proposed airport remarks in the flight directory that's at the FBO, I believe, it says unattended. Does that refer to the having an employee or somebody else there from the FBO?
Under the... Yes.
Okay.
Under the FARs, we are in the process of updating that, and that's called the Airport and Facilities Directory, commonly known as the Green Book. And that has a listing about that big of what's going on at Cottonwood. And the update is in process and should be done certainly by the end of this month.
So, would that then have the hours that somebody was there instead of unattended?
Yes, we're planning on having that there. And we have spoken with Mr. Wiseman about that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the Chair?
And I would offer, if you have questions, things pop up, don't hesitate, give me a call.
Certainly. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, I believe at this time, then, what we're going to do is take some comments from the public. So, there are yellow forms on the side table there. If you could please fill out a form, I'll collect them and call you up one by one. And again, do want to express my appreciation for the turnout this evening. I would respectfully ask that when you come to the podium, keep your comments to five minutes. We're likely going to have an annoying little buzzer that goes off at the five-minute mark. Out of respect to all the other neighbors and friends that are here tonight, please do try to curtail your comments at that point to give everybody else an opportunity to speak tonight. If you have questions, please address your questions directly to the council, and this is your full council up here. So, I would ask you, again, out of respect, to not address your questions back to the public behind you, but to ask us directly. We may answer those questions one by one, or we may just take a list of questions and answer those all at the end. If there are many folks here that have already said what you plan to say, you're still welcome to come up. You can say, "I'm in favor of the airport noise plan," or "I'm not in favor of the airport noise plan," again, just as an effort to respect the time of everyone here. So, again, thanks very much. We're going to call you up one by one, and again, the yellow forms are right over there. So, up first is Ms. Lynn Howard. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity for community members to speak tonight, and thank you for your service to the community. That service is deeply appreciated. In the August seventh, two thousand and nineteen Verdi Independent News article by Jason Brooks, "A Point Needs to Be Addressed." I believe Morgan Scott is quoted as saying, "We will need to balance the rights of pilots with those of residents. The action plan will not require the council to vote, but rather provide direction and guidance." It was not my experience at the June Airport Commission meeting that balance was being considered. I sincerely hope council members have the vision and the conscience to direct and guide for the interest of the community that lives here and not the multiple non-resident pilots that fly in and out of Cottonwood Airport without contribution to the citizens' or airport maintenance. Kudos to Morgan Scott, who thoroughly prepared and presented several noise-abatement solutions to the Airport Commission panel of four pilots and one airport employee. The two very viable solutions, number one, sooner turnout by the planes over a lightly populated area, and number two, takeoff and landing times moved to later in the mornings. Both of these recommendations were voted down, and the takeoff permitted-one-half-hour-after-sunrise rule remains. Literally, takeoff permitted from dawn to after dusk. I'd like to encourage the council to consider reinstating these two solutions that were rejected by the commission. As a resident that has an obvious stake in the airport's future direction, I'd like to be involved in the Airport Master Plan process when that begins. How will citizens be alerted so we can participate? The news article stated, "The airport will work with pilots and training groups in northern Arizona to develop a non-paved landing field away from residential areas for training purposes." End quote. "The northern Arizona student pilots are back in school, soon to be in the air practicing. It's good news to hear a landing field for training is forthcoming. How best can citizens be involved to assist in the development plans for this landing field?" Again, thank you for your deliberate, considerate, and thoughtful research and direction for airport recommendations that infect the entire community, the quality of life, and the quality of life of future citizens of fast-growing Cottonwood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Paul Hillman up next, and then I believe it's Loita Matthews. I hope I pronounced that correctly. You'll be up after Mr. Hillman. Evening.
Good evening. I, I just wanted to say that I am in favor of what they have, what the commission has come up with, and I believe that it is going to be beneficial to all the people here. I don't have any problems with the, what's going on right now. I live up in Pine Shadows, and it, it doesn't seem to be much of a problem for me. So, I just wanted to say I'm in favor of what they've come up with.
Thank you, sir. Loita Matthews? I hope I'm getting your name right.
I live just north where the planes take off, and I love it. They don't bother me at all. I wish there were more. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bob Feizer, you're up, and then after that will be Jim Matthews. Evening.
My name is Bob Feizer. I live four-eighty Mingus Shadows Drive, and I'm right in the flight path right now, and we're, the planes are coming over from Prescott, and there's some days, there, there was some days last summer where there'd be more than sixty flights right around our house. I mean, I can, I can look at the bottom of them, just like that, and I made calls. He's a very nice man. I made calls in about what I saw, and, and it, it wasn't so much the noise. It was, a lot of times, they just seemed like they were so low. I didn't like that much, and then we had the airplane crash over there. You know, and, and had that been in any one of those fields over there, we would, I'm ex-firefire, I'm the fire chief. And had it hit any of those fields over there, that would have been a big mess. So, I'm, I'm worried about that, and most of all, I'm wondering, okay, how many people use the airport? Do, do we have any statistics on that? I mean, we, we know how many people live around the airport, but how many people really use the airport?
I'm taking notes of all the questions, so we'll get back to you with your answer, so...
And I'm, I'm wondering about that, and also, how much money does the airport generate? We saw how much the feds are putting into it, but how much does the airport generate for the communities? You know, Cottonwood, Clarkdale, you know, Jerome, how, how much money comes back into the communities? Or is it all outgoing? I mean, is it a loss every month? I heard that it was a loss every month. So, I'm wondering, why do we have a airport that, you know, doesn't bring any money in? And then, how much money do these pilots pay the airport that are coming over here because they don't have a tower? Well, okay, we don't have a tower, why, why do we need more airplanes coming over here? And there's been talk in the past about more jet planes coming in, which, that's really going to raise some eyebrows. And I, I hear, you know, louder airplanes this year than what I heard last year, so I don't know about that. But I know we can't say anything about the noise. But the use of the airport, I think we can say as, as per a community, what works for the whole community, and now you're talking about shutting down some building. And that seems ridiculous, because that's a community. You know, what's going on with the economy, the building of places, so, yeah, think it over well, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jim Matthews?
Evening. Well, I just moved here, so I'm in there about a month and a half, and I really can't comment on it. So far, we're one mile toward Mingus Mountain, and so I really don't have a yes or no on this. It, so far, it doesn't bother me at all, so, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir. Nice for being here. I'm out of yellow forms up here, so I know there's more folks out there that would like to address us. Pamela Dormain?
Pamela Saint Germain, and we just live on the Vineyards of Cottonwood, and we three are here, are the neighbors of the Vineyards. We don't really mind the airport, but we're just kind of new in the area. I've lived in Sedona twenty-four years, moved here last November, and I guess the most concern is, and we're trying to address and trying to understand, is the safety of it all. And that is our biggest concern. And when we see them, like, Sunday, we thought, "Okay, what's the resolution here?" When they fly, and we are directly under the path, everybody says, "Oh, we're directly under the path." Well, we are, and we're sitting outside having coffee Sunday morning, and I guess about one hour brought about twenty planes. And we're trying to talk, and we have to yell. So, I said, "Well, let's just put on earphones and talk to one another." So, I guess mainly it's safety. I'm just praying that, I hope in their training process that, that eight hundred feet isn't too low, and why don't they go on up to a thousand? And would it really matter if somebody did fail or an engine failed? So, we're just praying all the time that they're really good flyers, pilots, you know? And that's just the biggest concern. I don't know what the resolution is. I don't really mind it, but it's kind of a new experience to us, and we thank you for trying to find an action plan.
Thank you. And last up is Lee, I'm so sorry, do... Okay, okay.
Hi.
Good evening. Thanks for being here.
On the map, it shows all those yellow dots, which are complaints. And I realize this is Cottonwood, but how about the complaints from Clarkdale? Because we're in the flight path also, and it doesn't show any of the complaints from Clarkdale.
Is that your question, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, five minutes, so if there's anything else, I'm taking notes of all the questions, so we'll get back to you with an answer on that.
Okay. And I just wanted to let you know, yesterday, we were traveling to Cottonwood, and we saw our plane take off to the south, and holy cow, they were low. And then, on our way back home to Clarkdale, the plane came in for a landing. And, and again, I said, "Oh, my God, that plane was low all, like, way before the runway." So, it, maybe it's my perception, but I can see why the people that took to the south are really complaining. Because I live in Clarkdale, and I know the planes are flying higher. They're still noisy, but it's a little bit better situation than those people down there, so, okay?
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience left tonight that wishes to address the council? You did speak, correct?
I just need, just one more thing, if I could.
If you could address the podium, sir? Come up to the podium, address the council from the podium?
Well, speaking of, of, of the altitude and all, is there anyone that has come out and really checked the planes coming in? You know? I know the police will check for noise on motorcycles. If your motorcycle is too loud, you know, it's going to sit there, and they're going to take you off to jail.
So, is your question if they check them for altitude or for noise?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just suggesting, since, since there's a complaint about noise, you know, why not get somebody to, to check the noise level on these airplanes and limit the noise level? I know we can't say anything after they're in the air, but, you know, some are going to make more noise on the ground, and then when they take off, they're going to still make more noise. So, maybe that, and somebody could check the altitude of these planes coming in. Because I mean, the one we saw yesterday was just crazy coming in over, I guess there's, there's a dog place out there, so it would've been over all, all those buildings out through there, and I mean, he was, he was like tree-top level. And it was a Prescott plane.
Thank you, sir. All right, and we will then close the floor to the public and open this up to the council, unless you had... Is there one other? I was fearful. I shouldn't open the floor to everyone to give their last comments, but, sir, if you could keep brief.
A lot of people think that the engines are noisy. It's, it's the props that make the noise. So, they could rev, you know, maybe less RPMs or whatever, more RPMs, but...
All right, thank you. All right, let's open this up to the council then for discussion.
Sir, would you like to bring Mr. Scott back up to answer some of your questions?
Sure, if you don't mind, Mr. Scott. So, we had, I took note of five questions. What is the, the tour, fairly related, what is the process for public participation in the Airport Master Plan process?
Thank you. So, the Airport Master Plan process should be starting very soon. You councilor, remember, you approved the grant for that earlier this month. Hopefully, next month, we'll have the actual contract in front of you. As soon as we have a contract, what we'll do is we'll sit down with the consultant, and we'll lay out a, a schedule for the master plan. By the way, it's probably going to be about an eighth-month-long process. We'll have a minimum of five public meetings. We'll advertise those public meetings. We will reach out to everyone, both on our airport notification list and on our airport, who, who have wished to be notified on anything regarding airport noise. So, we have two lists right now. We'll make sure all of them know about all five of those meetings.
Will they be scheduled well in advance?
That's correct.
Okay. And the second question's fairly related to that, the, there have been talks about a, a landing field for pilots that are training. Is there any opportunity for the public to participate in that process?
A landing field?
Yeah, we talked about a, a possible airstrip where, that would be remote.
Yes, in fact, that's something that, one of the ways we can support that is if it comes up in our Airport Master Plan. If multiple airports around northern Arizona mention it in their master, in master plan, how do I say this? We cannot get money for anything that's not mentioned in our master plan. So, I'm not necessarily suggesting that we would apply for that grant, but if multiple airports throughout northern Arizona mention it, and it comes up in their master plan, it's more likely to be something that the FAA is going to support.
Okay. And is Cottonwood in communication with the other municipalities around us that have an airport?
So, I have met with the flight schools and with the city of Prescott, none of the other schools or airports yet.
Okay. Third question, how much traffic, flight traffic, does Cottonwood see? And if you can, compare that to other airports around our area. I'd appreciate it.
So, Cottonwood sees about nineteen thousand operations a year. I apologize off the top of my head, that's fifty to sixty a day, so it sounds approximate from the numbers you heard tonight. I don't know numbers for Sedona or Flagstaff. I do know Prescott's about two, two-hundred-and-seventy thousand operations a year. I don't know any of the other numbers off the top of my head. I apologize.
Okay.
Morgan, you might want to clarify, if you quote, "An operation is a takeoff or a landing?"
That's correct. So, in fact, a touch-and-go might be one operation, because it's not a takeoff or a landing, it's just one operation.
I see, okay. But if somebody takes off, stops, and later, you know, take off, that would be two operations. Okay, got it. How much money does Cottonwood Airport generate?
So, although I don't have the numbers off the top of my head here for you today, the airport is close to recovering its operational costs, based on what the pilots pay in rental fees, what's generated from the leases around the airport, what's generated from fuel sales. That covers operational costs. It does not cover what matches our grants for our capital cost. Most of that comes from the general fund.
Okay, and so five percent?
We, as a matter of fact, we are looking to recover about a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand, six hundred dollars this coming year, this current fiscal year, in revenues, of which about approximately twenty thousand dollars goes to matching funds for capital improvement projects.
Okay, okay. Last question, complaints from Clarkdale.
Thank you. So, actually, on this map, we do have the Clarkdale complaints. I apologize, it doesn't show up very clear on the map. This is the Pine Shadows area, so I'll point for the audience, this is the Pine Shadows area here. So, north, north of that area is the Clarkdale area, so we do have four registered complaints in the Clarkdale area. So, this line right here for the audience, that is approximately the city limits between Clarkdale and Cottonwood. So, these areas up here in the Mingus Shadows area, those are the Clarkdale residents. We do have one Clarkdale resident in this area, too. And then for the council, so we're looking at the same map, this is approximately the city limit line. So, everything north of here are the people impacted in Clarkdale and the Mingus Shadows area, and then you have one Clarkdale resident impacted in that area.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from council for Mr. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, the one other question that was about us measuring altitude and noise and those kinds of things. And, Mr. Scott, correct me if I'm incorrect, but we can't do any of that.
So, we don't have any equipment to do that, nor are we qualified to do that. Now, here's what we can do. If, if we feel like someone is unusually low or, or doing something unsafe, we can report that to the Federal Aviation Administration. I can tell you that, especially if you're near Verde Village Unit Eight, or if you're near Mingus Avenue or Black Hills, planes are very low in that area. You're very near the end of the runway, and planes will be very low.
And then the Airport Master Plan, part of that is to do a, a noise study, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So then we will be able to measure the... I was doing a little bit of research on that today about decibels versus DLN, or however they measure that. But it will be measured, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. Thank you. Council?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further questions then, if you're okay with the plan, I haven't heard any suggestions from any of the council members if they want to add or subtract from that plan. But this is what has been approved by the commission. As you saw, most of it's recommendations. It's agreements with the pilots and asking nicely and those kinds of things. But we'll continue moving forward. We've already started working on signage. We're working on the video. So we're doing or working on many of those items. A lot of the other items will come to fruition after the master study plan. But unless we hear different from council tonight, we're going to move forward.
Okay. Well, I'll lead off then. I think this is, represents a very fair and balanced approach to doing the best we can to mitigate noise in an airport that we have very limited control over. And, you know, I don't, I believe our hands are fairly tied in what we can do there. I believe it's an airport that receives about as much traffic as most rural airports across Arizona. I think some of our proactive steps in trying to get with those property owners where there's vacant land and make sure that we don't have residential development there is proactive, and I think can do a lot to make sure that we don't exacerbate the problem going into the future. However, this is, time and again, the story of airports. When development starts to encircle them, this airport's been here for 80-plus years. And nobody had a crystal wall, I think, back in the '40s. I'm sure they were, could not have imagined that the development would have encroached the way it has. But there is private land around there. It is free to develop. So the best we can do as a city is try to encourage lower density or commercial industrial uses around the airport where possible. So I think, as a first step, I think this is a good effort. I think it is balanced, and the public has much more opportunity to participate moving forward as we do an airport master plan to see if there's something different that the community wants, which we can input into the airport master plan moving forward.
And I agree with you, Mayor. I like, you just used the term "first step." I do see this, this dialogue that's been started as not ending tonight. I appreciate the community members that came out to voice the concerns tonight, as well as at other meetings and in emails and phone calls, et cetera. I also do want to thank our Airport Commission. I think that they, this proposed airport noise action plan does represent significant thought and analysis of the concerns that were raised. And I think it fairly reflects a balance for the situation we're in now. But building back on that first step, I would like to see the city reassess and not just put this in place and leave it as a stagnant plan. If something's not working in two years, three years, let's reassess. Or when we get the airport master plan, what that information, you know, what can we do then with this noise action plan? What revisions should be made? So to me, this is a dialogue that should continue. But I do think that this, I don't have any changes to the noise action plan, and I think the commission, the suggestions, and the rationale for those items that were not included are fair.
I agree with what both of you have said, so, 100%.
What I've seen is, city staff has gone to a lot of trouble and been very gracious in putting out so much effort for what is a very small minority in our community. The Verde Independent will put a story out on airport noise, and you'll get 100 positive comments on one story. And we've got 54 people complaining. There's not much that can be done. I've seen a lack of personal responsibility on a lot of people's part. Nobody's complained, nobody's denied that they didn't know the airport was there. It's just that traffic has increased. And it's just, it's just a fact of life. It's happening on our roads. It's going to happen at our airport. So I mean, I fully support this plan. It's all voluntary. It's what you can do within the parameters of what the FAA lets us do. And I said, I think you've gone above and beyond. Done a great job.
Any other council members have anything to share?
This issue has come up over the years ever so often. And I don't think that, in all the years I've been on the council, we've ever really addressed the issues of the airport and the noise abatement there. So I think this is a big step, and like we've heard tonight, a first step. And we won't find out if some of these, these ideas will work unless we implement it. So we have to start there. And I'm sure this document will be ever-changing from time to time. And we should be aware of that for future use.
I agree with what everybody else has said as well. It's a great first step.
Okay. Last man standing.
I agree with the rest of the council. I want to commend Mr. Scott for the efforts that he and the Airport Commission have put into trying to resolve this problem. I would like to point out to you, when you buy a home in the general area of an airport, you're going to have airport noise. Stapleton International Airport was in Denver for 50, 60 years at the eastern border of the city of Denver, flying over open ground, until the city of Aurora decided that they were going to develop it into homes. People bought those homes by the droves and then began to complain that there were jets taking off every 30 seconds or landing every minute over their houses. The first question that was asked to them, when you went to look at your home, did you not hear the planes? When you were walking through that home to look at it, did you not hear the planes? You moved in, and now you hear the planes. And you want to move an airport that's been there for years. Okay? Same thing is happening at Luke Air Force Base down in Phoenix. They're fighting with people who want to develop the quiet zones around Luke. Luke has, their jets are, you want to talk noise? They're military. They don't care about noise. They care about, I'm here and you're gone. They're fighting with the developers down there who want to develop right up to the edges of Luke Air Force Base. Same problems are going to occur, folks. Every airport, when you build around an airport, you're going to have a problem. I've lived in my house for 22 years. Mr. Morgan, pardon me, Mr. Scott pointed out, I live in Verde Village 8. I live less than 1,500 feet from the south end of that runway. I see every plane land or take off every day. They've never bothered me. I've seen jets land. I can tell you every time Larry Green comes to town, because I hear his jet take off and I hear his jet land. And it's not an inconvenience. An inconvenience is when I'm in church on Sunday morning on 89A at our church, and 50 or 100 motorcycles come down 89A and interrupt our morning worship service because of all the motorcycle noise. But nobody complains about it. I'm sorry if the airport noise bothers you, but the things you need to look at is, is if we don't train these pilots, how are you going to fly out when you want to go somewhere? Because you're not. Because there's not going to be any qualified commercial pilots. So take into account your responsibility when you bought your home. If you love your home like I do, you don't want to move, and you find the airport really doesn't bother you. But I agree that we need to try to work with you. But you need to understand, you had some responsibility in this situation